Well, good afternoon, everybody. We are going to, oh, Troy, go ahead. It just said we're recording, so I think we got that.
Yes, sir, we are live and recording.
Okay, Troy, thank you for that. So I know we're going to begin today with an invocation from Pastor Van de Veer. Thank you for being here with us, Pastor. We appreciate it.
Father, we just thank you for this afternoon, this, Lord, this opportunity to come together and witness yet another one of your blessings, Lord. You delegate all your power and authority, Lord, amongst people. It's another way, Lord, that you shine on all, even those that don't know you. And so, Lord, we just pray that you would have your hand upon this time, that you would guide the agenda, the conversation. You bless our commissioners, the staff, Lord, everyone who is sharing information today, Lord. We pray for wisdom in making decisions for the blessing of all people. And, Lord, we just pray that you would work, that you would work in our cities, that you would work in our county, our nation, Lord, to draw many in these days in which we live to yourself, Lord. We love you, we thank you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. With that, I'll call the meeting to order if you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda today? We might need to unmute the mic. I apologize. There's a little button there to your right.
How about now?
We can hear you.
Thank you. The attorney's office has reviewed the agenda. We have no issue with it, and all matters are under your jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none. So with that, we'll move to item two, which is our consent agenda. I will ask if there's any citizen comment with regard to our consent agenda. Troy, do we have any comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm wondering if we can pull a couple of items. We need to talk about item I. Dan Avery had asked about item A. I'm sorry, I and G. I'd like to talk about G, please.
Okay, sure. And a commissioner has requested that those items be pulled from the consent agenda so that we will move both items G and I to the regular agenda.
Could we just talk about I and G and then go to the rest of the agenda?
Did you want them pulled for the regular agenda or you just wanted to speak about them?
I would just like to have I and J speak about each one of them, and then they can be approved with the consent agenda once we explain what's going on with each of them.
Oh, sure, please.
So if Dan would like to talk about I, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Dan Avery for Douglas County. Commissioners, as you know, item I is a resolution adopting procedural elements that will go along with the massage regulation ordinance that you will consider at 2:30. This item was originally heard by the board, considered by the board on March 28. It is returning to this agenda for inclusion of Exhibit A along with the resolution. Exhibit A contains the procedural elements for the massage licensure process. Staff proposes two clarifying edits. One is that the application fees will include a biannual renewal fee of $25. So every other year, massage businesses will renew their application. And in the procedural elements, the renewals will occur biennially, every two years. So staff requests approval of this resolution and its attachment with those two clarifying edits.
Dan, thank you for that. Commissioner Thomas, anything additional on that?
So that was just to clarify item I. So when we approve it, we understand that these two changes were added today. They were left off yesterday when it was published.
Thank you for that. And I'll just add, the county remains very committed to ensuring that we are keeping a keen eye on the human trafficking issue. Very thankful for the men and women in blue and for all of our partners at the DA's office working on the human trafficking issue. It was a House Bill 1300 that allowed counties to make regulations around massage parlors, which unfortunately can be a hotbed for human trafficking. When they get dinged, they can often pop up again right down the street in another strip mall. This allows counties to create measures that would allow for background checks and ensure that our young people in particular are made safe. So again, thank you for that. That is on our consent agenda today, and I appreciate the clarification.
And on item G, this is for the planning commission appointment. And Matt Collett, who will be appointed, is in the audience, just to point that out. And Jay Longmire is here. He was asked to come back and reinstate his application for the planning commission. I didn't know if you wanted to do that now or later.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And I think we did hear a request from our board to hear from Mr. Longmire. Mr. Longmire, did you want to approach and share?
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission. So as you know, a couple times in the past, one at a town hall on June 22 of last year, I testified and was quite vocal, along with many other people that were here, against the homeless encampment. And then subsequently, at the March 14 business meeting, I was vocal again in support of Commissioner Thomas, as were probably all the 60 or so people that were in the room. I approached Commissioner Thomas about a year, year and a half ago, asking if there was a place on the, in Douglas County, some kind of a board or if I could be of public service. She suggested the Parks Board. And while I was looking into that, a vacancy came open on the planning commission. And with my 37-year residential real estate background, she said this might be a good fit. I attended probably six or seven, maybe, planning commission meetings, talked to some of the planning commissioners, got a feel for what it was about and the time commitment, which I know is extensive, thought it would be a good fit. So I applied. That application, as you know, I don't believe was addressed. And so at the multiple times that Commissioner Thomas submitted, and so at the March 14 business meeting, somewhat with frustration, I withdrew my application. I told Commissioner Thomas, I'm not going to waste any more of your time or the commissioner's time or my time. It's apparently not going to be addressed. So I publicly withdrew my application. Subsequently, if my information is correct, she asked me if I wanted to still be on the planning commission. I said yes. And apparently, Commissioner Teal said if Jay Longmire publicly withdrew his application, he's going to have to come and publicly ask to have it reconsidered. So that's why I'm here today. Appreciate your time. I'll address any questions if you have them, or I'll sit.
Mr. Longmire, thank you for that. And at Commissioner Teal's request, you are here. So Commissioner Teal, did you have any questions or comments?
Well, not necessarily for this forum. I mean, Jay, you and I talked, actually, we had a really good conversation about a month ago, two months ago. I think I'd like to go ahead and have another conversation with you on that one. My big consideration for placing, well, Jay, placing you today and appointing you today is we have seen another candidate come out of the community. And so I think we do need to definitely take action on the appointment of Mr. Collett to the alternate position today. But I really think, since we've had another candidate come forward, we need to, and we haven't had a discussion about consideration of that candidate yet, we really do need to kind of have a discussion as a board with two candidates before us. Jay, thank you very much for, though, coming in and placing yourself back into consideration after publicly withdrawing. I do appreciate that. I think that was very important for the public to see that. But we do have a changed situation, so I would ask my colleagues to consider that we hold off on the appointment of Mr. Longmire today. We consider him and the other candidate that has come forward from the community. I have to make note, it is a candidate who is not a resident of Highlands Ranch, even though the district that, Jay, you're being considered for does represent your home neighborhood of Highlands Ranch, as well as other parts of the county. So I would offer that up to my colleagues as a process to go forward. But, Mr. Longmire, I very much appreciate you coming before us today and placing your name back into contention.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This isn't a question, Jay. I'd just like to thank you for being here. And for the record, I represent Highlands Ranch District. It does include Sterling Ranch and Roxborough. It also includes Leveres, where Matt lives, and I still support Jay Longmire as my candidate to represent Highlands Ranch on the planning commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Teal, thank you for that. Mr. Longmire, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
I don't see item G as having Mr. Longmire on the agenda, but simply Mr. Collett as the alternate position. Is that accurate?
That's what's on there. I was hoping, since Commissioner Teal asked that Jay come here and reapply, I've been trying to get him on the planning commission since January, that we could add him to item G as well and appoint both Jay Longmire as the planning commissioner and Matt as the alternate.
Okay. Let me ask, counsel, is there, because that was not posted for today, is there any issue with that particular appointment? Were we to take that up?
That wouldn't have been properly posted.
That would not have been properly posted.
Not been.
Okay. Well, I'll just say this. I want to be a man of my word. I know one of the comments that we made during our last work session were that if Mr. Longmire indicated his willingness to be appointed, that we would certainly move forward with that. I'm going to honor that, because you've come here today, sir, and indicated your willingness to serve. I will support that. Because it was not posted today, we will post that for a proper meeting and ensure that gets an appropriate hearing. But my expectation is to act consistently with what we agreed upon in our work session. So with that...
Chair, may I request, though, a work session? As I said prior, we do have two viable candidates that have, with Mr. Longmire appearing here today and placing his name back into contention, we do have two viable candidates for the position. I do think it would be worthy of public discourse for the board to consider those side by side in a work session in order to at least attempt, actually, forget attempt, to narrow it down to a single appointment that we could bring forward to a business meeting.
Well, and Commissioner Teal, I appreciate that and recognize the importance of having that discussion. I know that we did have a discussion about Commissioner Thomas's appointment to the planning commission. And what I recall very specifically is that if Mr. Longmire came back on your condition, that you would agree to appoint him.
And this is on tape. We can review. I did agree to consider his candidacy. It is under consideration. I believe, though, it's worthy of the public discourse for us to convene as a board once again and to consider both candidates side by side in order to achieve a singular appointment at a business meeting.
Well, again, I took our conversation as if Mr. Longmire came back, he would be appointed. But I will honor that comment from you and from Commissioner Teal so that we can have a discussion as a board in a work session around this particular appointment. So with that, any other items that we'd like to discuss from the consent agenda?
I have no others. Thank you.
You bet.
I'm good to go.
Okay. So with that, and I believe we've already taken citizen comment, so any further discussion and/or a motion?
Well, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the requests for all items A through AD of the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. So with that, we will move on to our next item today, which is our regular agenda, item three. And our first item is item 3A, a resolution recognizing Douglas County Regional 911 Emergency Dispatchers as First Responders. Sheriff Darren Weekly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Sheriff Darren Weekly. April 9 through the 15th, 2023, is recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. As the new sheriff of Douglas County, I'm proud that the first time that I am in front of you formally addressing the board in a public meeting is to respectfully request this proclamation and this recognition by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners for our dispatchers. Law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service providers have heroes too. Those heroes are called dispatchers. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office and our Regional 911 Communication Center have some of the best in the business. Our dispatchers are carefully selected and highly trained public safety professionals. They're there for citizens in times of extreme crisis. They call people who call 911, who many times are in the midst of a horrific situation. They help deliver babies, administer CPR, or obtain critical pertinent information for my deputies and fire personnel who respond to every type of call imaginable. They're also that voice that my staff hear on the radio to bring calm and focus during a chaotic situation such as a vehicle pursuit, foot chase, and shots fired calls, just to name a few. Therefore, as the sheriff of Douglas County, I humbly and respectfully request to read this proclamation in hopes that the board sees fit to approve it, because frankly, and I need to emphasize this, this is long overdue. If I may read it?
Yes.
Proclamation, actually, first, can I have all of our dispatchers, please, stand Proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Colorado, recognizing the Douglas County Regional 911 Emergency Dispatchers as First Responders. Whereas the federal government's standard occupation classification system, SOCS, classified workers into occupational categories for statistical purposes based on the nature of the work performed and, in some cases, based upon the skills, education, or training needed to perform the work. And whereas 911 dispatchers are currently categorized in the SOCS as an office and administrative support occupation, a category that includes secretaries and office clerks, and whereas classifying 911 dispatchers as office and administrative support fails to recognize their central role in public safety and homeland security, their specialized training and skills, their uniquely stressful work environment, and whereas classifying 911 dispatchers as protective service occupations alongside law enforcement, firefighter, security guards, lifeguards, and others' jobs whose it is to protect our communities would better reflect the work that they perform. And whereas the Douglas County Regional 911 Emergency Dispatchers are highly trained professionals that each year handle, on average, approximately 300,000 telephone calls, including 90,000 emergency 911 calls from citizens in need of law enforcement, fire, and/or EMS. And whereas all Douglas Regional 911 Emergency Dispatchers are trained and certified in emergency medical dispatch and crisis intervention, qualifying them to offer a variety of potentially life-saving instructions, including CPR, bleeding control, choking, childbirth, airway management, as well as crisis de-escalation by telephone until EMS or law enforcement arrives on scene. And whereas the Douglas County Regional 911 Communication Center provides emergency dispatch services to 15 law enforcement and fire EMS agencies, these agencies already consider dispatchers to be the first among first responders, as their information and instructions are critical to keeping the citizens and emergency responders safe. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that from this day forward, Douglas County Regional 911 Dispatchers are hereby elevated to the status of first responders.
Sheriff, thank you so much for that. For the board, any questions or comments for Sheriff Weekly?
My comments aren't for the sheriff, they're for the dispatchers. I dispatched for both the Rappahoe County Sheriff and Colorado State Patrol. And in those days, we didn't get this kind of recognition at all. So I am really pleased. Grace is shaking her head. You've been here a long time, you know. And so I'm really pleased to see that you are being recognized for what you do, because when you answer that phone, you don't know what's on the other end. And I remember dispatching the night a state patrol officer in Pueblo was killed. And I had to keep everybody else calm to do their job. So I don't know what you do today, but I know what dispatchers did many years ago. So my heart goes out to you and sincerely thank you for all you do for our citizens, because you are the first of the first responders. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
I have no questions for the sheriff. If he says this is appropriate, I'm all on board. I'd be happy to make comments, to speak what I'm sure is in favor of a motion when made.
Okay. Well, I'll just offer similar comments, that, you know, my heroes are the men and women in blue, and to hear about the heroes of my heroes is tremendously significant. I can't imagine the number of lives that we'll never hear about that you have saved as a result of your effort and your work on a daily basis. Thank you so incredibly much on behalf of the county for what you do for all of us. We greatly appreciate it. How about a big round of applause again for our dispatchers? So with that, let me ask for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to this item 3B, 3A?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have one other order of business, if I may, in this forum.
Certainly.
2022, we selected a Douglas County Regional Dispatcher of the Year. And I would like to acknowledge that person here in this forum today. And I would like to call up dispatcher Kimberly Pitts. Kim Pitts was nominated by her fellow dispatchers, as well as the dispatch supervisors, as the 2022 Dispatcher of the Year. Kim is consistently recognized for her strong work ethic and her dedication to creating a positive work environment. She has the ability to recognize what work needs to be done prior to being asked and completes these tasks in a timely and thorough manner. Kim takes a great deal of pride in helping her coworkers, as well as the responders she works with. She displays an extremely positive attitude, and she has fostered strong working relationships with individuals at every level within the organization. Kim is a member of the dispatch's resource and education team, is a communications training officer, and became a crisis intervention team or CIT coach over this last year. For these reasons and more, Kim, you have been awarded the 2022 Dispatcher of the Year. Congratulations.
I think it's always wonderful when we're able to collectively recognize those heroes among us. Sheriff, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So with that, let me bring it back to citizen comment. Is there any additional citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item? Troy, do we have any comment online?
No. Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution recognizing Douglas County Regional 911 Emergency Dispatchers as First Responders.
It was about a week from now, nine years ago, that I first came into elected service with the town of Cass Rock as member of the council. In that first, in that second year, we had an option before us to go ahead and give raises to our uniform, our sworn force, but also it was up for a discussion to give raises to our dispatch team. Now, of course, I'm sure everybody here is aware, Cass Rock's dispatch team, that's a whole different group for the police department there, although I guess, I do know you guys cover the Cass Rock Fire Department. And it was kind of a heated discussion, because the budget was a little tight that year. And a comment was made by a member of the council that, you know, why are we giving raises to secretaries? And, you know, as a part of your preamble, Sheriff, you noted that without this resolution, that's kind of the same classification. Police Chief Jack Colley, who I know many of you know, you've worked with, boy, he like shot into life. He got hot really quick and explained that, no, dispatchers are a part of the law enforcement team. It is the dispatchers who are talking to the different patrol teams, bringing them together, keeping them informed, all the while listening to that responding officer and sometimes knowing just from the tenor of the voice whether this is a routine call or potentially life or death. So I'm really happy to see this resolution before us. And Sheriff, thank you so much for taking care of the team, taking care of this team, giving them the honor and the respect that they need, that they deserve. And for that, it is really my pleasure to second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Congratulations. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is item 3B, an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cass Rock and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners regarding financial contribution to Crowfoot Valley Road widening project in the amount of $1,706,000. Douglas County Project Number DV 2023-051. Matt Williams, Assistant Director of Public Works Engineering, presenting for staff. Hi, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Matt Williams with Public Works Engineering. Before you today is an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cass Rock and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners for the widening of Crowfoot Valley Road. The project details associated with this is to widen Crowfoot Valley Road from Nob Cone all the way up to McCanta Boulevard from two to four lanes. We will be, Cass Rock will be constructing appropriate intersection improvements, including a signal at Sapphire Point Boulevard. The town will manage all design and construction aspects of the project, and the anticipated total project cost is $7.5 million. As mentioned earlier, the parties of the agreement are the town of Cass Rock and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. And the purpose of this agreement is to provide for the financial contribution from Douglas County to the town of Cass Rock in the amount of $1,706,000, which includes $206,000 contribution from the Canyon South Development, just up the road there. This is a tough map to zoom in and see what the improvements actually are, but this is the extent of the project out there. To the far left, you have Founder's Parkway, and to the right, you have McCanta Boulevard. There's going to have to be some restriping to the south and west of Nob Cone in order to get four lanes through there, and then it'll be widening of the asphalt and concrete to get the additional two lanes for the rest of that stretch in there. So that concludes my presentation. Any, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Matt, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for Matt?
I have none, thank you.
No. Talk about nine years of dealing with one subject. This is, I think, there's been nine years of discussion on this one. So thanks, Matt. Thanks for bringing this forward so we can really get moving. forward, so we can really get moving.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Matt. With that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item? Troy, do we have any online comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Castle Rock and Douglas County Board of County Commissioners regarding financial contributions for Crowfoot Valley Road widening project in the amount of $1,706,000. Douglas County Project DV 2023-051.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. So with that, we'll move on to Item C, which is the 2023 Helicopter EU Contract in the Amount of $1,128,750. Michael Alexander, Deputy Director of OEM, presenting for staff. Hi, Mike.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, Mike Alexander for Emergency Management. Today, we'll be presenting Agenda Item C, the 2023 Helicopter Exclusive Use Contract in the Amount of $1,128,750. As a result of forecasted warm and dry conditions in Douglas County for 2023, the Office of Emergency Management is requesting approval for a purchase order and award of invitation for bid 008-23 Exclusive Use Helicopter Services with Transero LTD for a 153-day exclusive use EU period from June 1st to October 31st. Transero was selected from eligible vendors based on value and performance, following the county's open bid process and procedures. This contract includes options to extend the contract annually for an additional four terms beyond the initial one-year contract contingent upon funding and subject to the county's satisfaction with the services provided. The cost for this EU purchase order is $1,128,750, which includes daily availability for the helicopter, as well as flight time for training and fire response. Commissioners, this funding is an investment in public safety. Wildfires the number one natural hazard threatening Douglas County, and our heliattack program gives us a distinct advantage in meeting that threat hard, heavy, and fast. We have a proven record of success, which we hope to continue providing our citizens in 2023. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mike, thank you for that presentation. And I know we are deeply honored to have members of our Douglas County Wildfire Initiative with us here. If you are a member of the Douglas County Wildfire Initiative, would you stand and be recognized? All right, here, here. Thank you all for being here. Any questions for Mike?
Mike, so this is the contract for the actual rental reservation, you know, the first use of that helicopter. Is this just going to be used in Douglas County, or do we have the ability to help out our fellow counties, adjacent counties?
We do have the ability to help out our neighbors, both adjacent counties, as well as federal land management agencies. We anticipate a letter of approval with the US Forest Service this year to be able to operate our program and our helicopter on their lands as an additional resource to state and federal aviation assets. So we're able to chip in our resource to that greater pool. But the benefit to having our exclusive use contract is that we in Douglas County retain operational control of this resource, so that when there's a need in Douglas County, we can ensure it's available to respond here.
Okay. And then, have we, haven't we had to do that in recent years? Haven't we been called upon by our neighboring agencies to help out?
Absolutely. Specific to the helicopter, last year, we assisted Elbert County with wildfire-threatening homes, as well as Jefferson County with a five-acre fire in very difficult access terrain near the Kent Carroll subdivision.
Okay. And then, what effect on, and I know this is a little off-subject, but I hope the board will allow, what effect on our helicopter response operations has it had with the budget decisions we've made last year to increase the size of the heliattack team?
Well, I think the biggest change this year that we're able to provide going forward is that letter of approval to operate on federal lands, which we were not able to achieve last year. The difference this year is that we weren't able to meet the staffing and qualification requirements last year. Now, with the additional FTE provided to the program, we were able to hire individuals with the right experience, qualification, professionalism to meet that national standard and operate as such. So that's been a huge benefit to us for this year.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Further questions for Mike?
Mike, when I read these last night, I think I might have gotten mixed up. Does this one include a little less than $20,000 for a trailer to support the helicopter, or is that in the next item?
That's a supplemental request associated to this, but not included in the number before you at this moment.
So will we talk about this in the next, in Item D? I know I read it last night in one of these two packets.
No, it was approved as an associated item to this, but we can discuss it now, as it's not, it didn't meet the threshold to come before the board.
Okay, so it was explained in here. So it's, I think, maybe $18,000. So when it says it's a trailer, so this is for the pilot, for the helicopter, to be in at the Moore Road property in case he needs to respond with the helicopter. Is that right?
It's a mobile office facility for both the pilot, mechanic, fuel truck driver, as well as the heliattack crew. So it's their only office facility where we stage the helicopter for response. So it provides, it provides office facility for the personnel associated with the program.
Okay, good. I was just here thinking, do they have an RV they're in? What do they have? Because we need to take care of them, so that they're ready when we need them. So that's what that trailer is for.
That's correct.
Okay, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And I don't have any questions, but I'm just really thankful and honored for your leadership, Mike. You know, a couple of years ago, after the Chatridge Two Fire, and following a presentation in Jefferson County from wildfire professionals, with the support of this board, I started the wildfire initiative, so that we could continue to hit wildfires hard, heavy, and fast. And when I think about the support that all three of us made toward ensuring that we're being proactive around wildfires, and the wonderful recommendations that we received from the wildfire initiative committee, what I'm reminded of is, when we step outside of those doors, we see a clear sky. And we'll never know how many fires have been suppressed, how many homes have been saved, how many lives have been saved, how many pets have been saved as a result of this effort to ensure that we're being proactive. I think you shared today during our wildfire initiative meeting that it's about nine wildfires a month. And any one of those could really take off and devastate our community, but because of your work, our county is safe. So I'm really proud of this work today, and appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the 2023 Helicopter EU Contract in the Amount of $1,128,750.
It's a good program. I second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move on to our next item, which is Item 3D on our regular agenda. It's a public contract for services for the 2023 Aviation Wildland Fire Support in the Amount of $100,000. Again, Mike Alexander, presenting for staff. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Alexander, again, for Emergency Management. This request differs from the previous, in that the previous was for exclusive use helicopter aviation support, which means that we retain operational control and have exclusive rights for that resource while we're paying for it here in Douglas County. This agenda item refers to call when needed contracts with multiple vendors for us, that provides Douglas County the ability to call upon them when we have a need and resources are unavailable otherwise. So it's pre-established relationships with vendors here locally in Colorado along the Front Range, as well as beyond, for not only helicopter support, but fixed wing air tanker support. The beauty about these contracts is that we don't pay for them unless we call upon them for services. And if they're available, if they have resources available and are able to send them to us, they will provide it in as timely a fashion as they can, and provide that service to us based on the negotiated rates and conditions. So we are requesting four vendors to be approved for our call when needed contracts at this time. We request approval to enter into them for a maximum of $100,000 per contract. And those four vendors are Tent Tanker Air Carrier, based out of New Mexico, Arrow Seat, based in Fort Morgan, Colorado, Rampart Helicopter Services, based in Loveland, as well as Transero, again, based out of Loveland. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Mike. Any questions for Mike?
Mike, did you say it's $100,000 for each vendor, or $100,000 for all four vendors?
Per vendor, maximum per vendor.
So then, this is, this contract, this motion then, for $400,000?
It should stay $400,000.
So do we need to change the motion? I just need to be clear, my motion log says I'm approving $100,000, but that's why I want to clarify how much we are approving.
You'd want to correct that.
You can correct that, Commissioner.
So it's $100,000 per vendor?
Per contract, per vendor, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike?
Mike, any substantial changes? I know we had this contract, we had the same kind of agreement last year. Any substantial changes?
No substantial changes. And we did not have need to call upon any of these vendors last year.
Well, let's hope for another boring summer for these guys.
Indeed.
Great. And with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve a public contract for services for 2023 Aviation Wildland Fire Support in the Amount of $100,000 per vendor for a total allocation of $400,000.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. And Commissioner Teal, thank you for making that clarification. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Congrats again.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to Item 4E in our regular agenda, and that's an ARPA beneficiary agreement between Douglas County and the Sedalia Water and Sanitation District in the Amount of $2,653,134. Dan Avery, Special Projects Manager, presenting for staff.
Dan, staff, as you noted, the item before you is an American Rescue Plan Act beneficiary agreement between Douglas County and the Sedalia Water and Sanitation District. This agreement provides grant funds in the Amount of $2,653,134 to be used for leak repair, pre-construction costs, and construction costs associated with water line replacement within the community of Sedalia. This funding augments a voter-approved levy and USDA grant funding that will also support necessary water line replacements. The agreement includes a performance standard requiring that the Sedalia Water and Sanitation District Distribution System be equipped with an emergency interconnection to regional infrastructure that is capable of delivering renewable water supplies as a component of the water line replacement project. As I've noted, funding for this agreement will come from Douglas County's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. We do have representatives from Sedalia Water and Sanitation who are available to speak or address any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And for representatives from Sedalia, would you like to speak or present on this item? Great.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mary Castle, the Sedalia Water and Sanitation District Engineer. I'm here on behalf of the district to thank you for your continued support of the district. These infrastructure improvements are absolutely vital for us to continue to have a sustainable water source for the district. So this is larger than we've seen in magnitudes, and will allow us to replace the infrastructure district-wide, this along with some other funding sources. It's an opportunity we've never seen, and we appreciate your consideration and all of the staff's support over these last several months. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Castle. Any questions for staff or Sedalia?
So you had an election last November, and did it pass, and what were the numbers?
Yes, that election did pass. The overall total project is $8.3 million. So the funding, the 2.6 from the county, and then we have an additional federal funding source through the USDA. And that election passed with the highest percentage passing election in the District of Sedalia. So it was a great turnout. The district is ready to complete this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Any further questions for the applicant or staff?
No questions.
Okay. And with that, let me open it up for citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment either in person or online with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
So I have a motion to approve the ARPA beneficiary agreement between Douglas County and the Sedalia Water and Sanitation District in the Amount of $2,653,134.
I'll second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Absolutely. So with that, we'll move on to Item 3F, which is an ARPA beneficiary agreement between Douglas County and the Luviers Water and Sanitation District in the Amount of $1,600,000. Dan Avery, once again, presenting for staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you noted, this beneficiary agreement totals $1.6 million, with funding to be used for pre-construction, easement acquisition, and construction costs associated with a radium treatment system for the community of Luviers. Funding may also be used for pre-construction, easement, acquisition, and construction costs associated with replacement of aging or undersized water and wastewater distribution and collection lines, and associated service connections. This agreement includes a performance standard requiring that the radium treatment system meet or exceed currently applicable standards of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and additionally provides that the Luviers Water and Sanitation District will participate in other regional water and wastewater agreements on the Highway 85 corridor. As I've noted, funding for this agreement will come from Douglas County's American Rescue Plan Act allocation. There are also representatives from Luviers here that can address any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Luviers?
Hello. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you. Now, we can return to our community and say, help's on the way. We're going to get the radium problem fixed. It's such a small community, and having such good relationships with the small, in the small community, that you know people, you see them walk by your yard, and now to finally be able to shout some good news at them, I'd just like to say thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, staff.
Matt, thank you for that. Any questions for Luviers or for staff?
I have none. Thank you.
No questions.
And I have none either. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
You know, it was very important, once, once we had the allocation notification that came down from Congress about the American Rescue Act, that we did not want the funds to be used frivolously. We wanted the funds to be used in a way that were significant, that could build to the next generation, and could address the emergent issues that we have here in the county. I'm sure there's nobody in Sedalia, there's nobody in Luviers, that wanted to volunteer to take advantage of that emergent category. But it was, it was needs that we knew of. We know the vulnerability that small communities have. You know, Matt, you talked about how great small communities are. But there is a financial vulnerability, particularly when it comes to infrastructure, that is, that is aging, aging out. You know, Luviers is a neat historic town, going all the way back to the turn of the 20th century. 20th century, and you could feel that when you're in that community, and it's phenomenal. But there's infrastructure there that is also almost 100 years old and just no longer living up to the test of time. So it was very important for me that, you know, once we wrapped our heads around what the ARPA funding should be used for, could be used for, it was very important for me to address these emergent concerns that we see, especially among our smaller communities. You know, I live in Casserac. Casserac, believe me, I've been paying my water bill for over 20 years now and has financially prepared for the future. We understand the challenges that our smaller communities face, though, when it comes to, you know, nice words, good rhetoric can't fix an aging distribution center, aging distribution system that is springing a leak, gosh, every few weeks. Nice words and good rhetoric can't fix a problem when radon is suddenly intruding into your well water. And so it's with real pleasure, and if it does meet the approval of the board, to make a motion to approve the ARPA beneficiary agreement between Douglas County and the Livers Water and Sanitation District in the amount of 1,600,000.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? You know, I have a couple of comments as well. I'm incredibly honored to be in support of this particular motion today, and Commissioner Teal, thank you for making those wise comments and making the motion. You know, I think about when I was in high school, a movie came out called Aaron Brockovich, and, you know, the subject to that film was the hexavalent chromium that was found in groundwater that was impacting a very small community, very similar to Livers. It's one of the reasons I went to law school and studied land use, ended up being a planning commissioner, and now sitting in this seat. I also think about Flint, Michigan, and, you know, the fact that there was lead in the water for years that the government knew about. You know, we often say, I often say, that in Douglas County, we don't wait to do great. I hope we haven't waited too long, and I'm really glad to and proud to partner with Livers to address this issue in a way that protects you, your citizens, and the rest of our county. So I will absolutely be in support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Congratulations. Wonderful. So with that, we'll move on to item 3G, which is an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding construction safety improvements on State Highway 83 in an amount not to exceed 4,200,000. Arthur Griffith, Capital Improvements Project Manager, presenting for staff. Hi, Art.
Thank you. Art Griffith for Douglas County Engineering. We heard public opinions about the need to improve State Highway 83 when we were doing public outreach for the South Gap, and a lot of concerns came up about during construction, traffic increasing on Parker Road or State Highway 83. We were successful, Douglas County, in submitting to Dr. Cog through their TIP process, the Transportation Improvement Program Project Selection Process, and the previous TIP to receive 5.9 million from Dr. Cog. The county is putting in 4.2 million, along with 4.6 million from CDOT, to make safety improvements along the entire corridor. So as part of this agreement, it's related to 14.7 million in improvement, but as a result of the study, CDOT and Douglas County identified over 50 million in improvements. And through other programs that CDOT is advancing, that we're not contributing to, brings the total contributions up to 26 million. So quite an accomplishment, and appreciation goes out to CDOT in helping us advance the improvements. Part of safety improvements and operational improvements includes, in this IGA, is a Rafter Road and East Park Drive improvements, left turn lanes. We did have fatality there a couple of years ago. Those fundings that CDOT's bringing to the table are 100% covered for construction, up to 2.7 million through the faster safety portion of the funds that we contribute through our license plates renewals. As part of this project, in order to advance these improvements, enlisted our several intersection improvements in addition to Rafter Road, Hidden Mesa, Lost Lake Drive, Prairie Canyon Ranch, Gillian Road, Lorraine Road. As part of the Gillian Road improvements, that will include improving Cherry Creek Valley Elementary School improvements. There'll be improvements to Parker Road near the Franktown Elementary School, will increase left turn storage and increase the A-cell and D-cell lengths and add shoulders. In order to advance this project, we have to restore some funding to this project, and the funding is coming through a budget reallocation of 4.2 million out of the Pine Drive Improvement Project, which is part of this agenda and motion to approve the budget reallocation. We're able to do that because we scaled back the Pine Drive Improvement Projects to just extend from Lincoln through the Pine Lane intersection. We were having difficulty in acquiring right-of-way, all the way up near Inspiration Drive, and we had been negotiating with the property's owners for over two and a half years, but in a decision in engineering staff, with Doug's input, we scaled it back to include the major operational improvements that are needed at Ponderosa and Pine Lane Intersections, and the widening from Lincoln up through the Pine Lane Intersection. So that's kind of highlighting. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Art, thanks for that presentation. Any questions for staff?
This is just more of a thanks for working on this project. I don't think that that Highway 83 has changed much from when I was a state trooper, patrolling it, and it was dangerous then. So when people slow and make a left turn, whether they use their turn signals or not, that's a recipe for disaster. So thank you for working on this. This is a really needed project. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Further commissioner comment or questions for staff?
Actually, I've been the one having to answer many questions about this subject over the year, when Art would call me in first, say, "Hey, councilman," and then, "Hey, Commissioner, how about..." And it's been years bringing this project before the board. So I have no questions. I will have comments in support of this agenda item after public comment.
Okay. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in person or online with regard to this item?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Well, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sure Art really does appreciate your note of thanks because, again, I feel like, Art, we need to rename you Captain Ahab, and this has been, among all the other projects, road projects that we have had going on since before I came onto the board, this is one that Art just hasn't given up on. Three years ago, four years ago, we tried to bring this before Dr. Cog to, for funding, and we were told absolutely not. And Dr. Cog is the Denver Regional Council of Government. It is the transportation metropolitan planning organization for the Denver metro area. We have to go and work with many municipalities and counties, some of who do not share our philosophies on what it means to run a government, a local government here in Colorado. And we were told no. We were told, nope, we can't, it doesn't qualify, we can't get it on our master planning at Dr. Cog. And I think that's when I got the first phone call from Art, saying, "Hey, councilmember, what about this? What about that?" And it's been something that, Art, you really need to be commended for, because of that 26 million you spoke about, I know your fingerprints are on every single dollar coming in. I mean, this is probably going to be an unsung accomplishment by the county government. And yet, this is, Abe, beforehand, we were talking about the wildfire, the hell attack, and you said, "How many times do we look out at a blue sky and not know how many homes were saved because of our preparations that we do right here?" And this is one of those situations, guys. The work that Art has brought forward, relentlessly pursuing the funding needed to bring before us today, and as well as, you know, planning around the projects that we have going now so that we could, you know, have this 4.2 million to contribute here. And, you know, it's not like, it's not like fiscally wear a wash in wondering how to spend money. Things have tightened up in the years after COVID, and it's, Art, first of all, you know, I will echo Commissioner Thomas's thanks for the work you've done on this. I'm not really sure I was always happy to take that phone call and come up with some other idea, but quite frankly, to be the guy that gets to be at the other end of the phone call is one of the reasons why I'm here today, and so thanks for being a great partner for the people of Douglas County on this.
I appreciate those comments. I must say that I wanted to, you recognize Dave Herzog and Josh Breedlove and Stephanie Allenese, a lot of new faces to CDOT that helped pick up this ball and run with it. So a lot of appreciation, and Tony Brandisi for getting these funds selected to an important corridor to make safety improvements on. So I'll share that with them.
I don't know. This one's your fault, bud.
Okay.
Yeah, you get all the credit on this one, as far as I'm concerned. Well done, Art.
Thank you for that. Any further questions for Art?
I have a motion.
Yep.
I have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding constructing safety improvements on State Highway 83 in an amount not to exceed 4,200,000.
I will second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Art, thank you so much. So with that, we will move to item 4, which is our time for citizen comment and organizational comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would, please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. With that, is there any citizen comment today? Yes, ma'am?
To register with the attorney.
Ma'am, if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Yes. I am Catherine Michelson from Highlands Ranch, and I have some documents that I would like. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for giving we the people time in our hearing room. I've missed visiting you, but I've been listening to your hearings and your two-year civility meetings. At one civility meeting, I listened to Abe Leyden say, "Yes, we'd like to reinstate Laura Thomas as chair," and to various committees. When Ms. Thomas said, "Well, why don't you reinstate me?", Mr. Leyden said that he'd have to test Laura first. Test? Trust Laura Thomas? She's already been honed by steel, working for Douglas County for over 26 years and contending with the two of you. If that's not enough, let's talk about STEM. Isn't it a huge decision for two men to make the judgment over the allocation of a million dollars without being respectful of a third commissioner's vote? Laura's dissenting decision on the STEM project was because no security expert recommended the project. Laura also felt it should remain in the hands of the school district. This decision alone should be proof enough that Laura Thomas should be in the chairman's seat. A million-dollar decision gone disastrously awry in the hands of Teal Leyden? Not okay. I'd as well like to address the names we the people have been called by Mr. Leyden. You have addressed us as hijacking your hearing room, being rude to your staff, which is pure prevarication. You called us political theater and added political shenanigans. As you call Ms. Thomas's names, your name-calling of we the people smacks of government bullying of citizens. Well, you've cut your teeth on Mrs. Thomas. I see that we the people are next. You say that Laura is difficult to work with? Now you intimate that we the people are difficult to work with? Because we do not agree with you? We are difficult to work with? Because we call you out on name-calling? You, Teal Leyden, are duly elected. You may not act as dictators. You answer to we the people. As you are constantly fond of saying, Mr. Leyden, I work for you. Please prove it. We the people are watching, Abe Leyden and George Teal. We want a duly-elected commissioner put back in the chair and back on her committees. Our demands were given to you on March 14th. Be aware that we the people are not going away. We are listening. It is you two, Teal Leyden, who need to be tested. We the people will not be slaves to your abuses. Thank you.
Is there further citizen comment? Further citizen comment today? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Cynthia Dalton. I live at 9660 Kings Mill Lane, Lone Tree. This is my third time up here now on these topics, and so my comments today will be short and to the point. This entire civility fiasco has awakened citizens to the fact that there is no oversight over our Board of Commissioners, and this board manages a budget of roughly 600 million. Having come from the corporate world, I find this fact astounding, there's no oversight. We the citizens must be the oversight. Most citizens have faith and trust that our board will make decisions in the best interests of the citizenry, but we need county transparency. What is your plan to keep all citizens informed on county issues? Many of us receive Laura's weekly newsletter, but we need transparency for all citizens. So that's one of my questions, is what will there be a plan to, to make sure we all know what's going on since there's no one overseeing the board? The second topic is on the reinstatement of Laura's leadership on committees and the board. The civility meetings seem redundant to me with Section 2.3 of the Commissioner Code of Conduct, as stated in the Commissioner Policy Manual. I have three questions. What is the goal of the meetings and what will constitute success? Secondly, why is the board not addressing the uncivil, defamatory Laura flyers that suspected Laura Teal is sending out? Will George be removed from committees? And the excuse to remove Laura from vital committee meetings and as chair of the board seemed arbitrary and subjective. She was reelected overwhelmingly by the citizens who demand her leadership. When will she be reinstated? This has been brought up now over and over again at numerous meetings, and we're not getting any answer as to when she'll be reinstated, or what the, how, or what she needs to do, or what you need to do. We get no answers. So I look forward to substantive answers to my questions. Thank you.
Further citizen comment? Yes, sir?
My name is Richard Bell. I reside at 10305 North Chatfield Place, Littleton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And yes, I have received another defamatory card that continues... And yes, I have received another defamatory card that continues the attacks on Commissioner Thomas, and really on our county as a whole. I ask you, Commissioners Leyden and Teal, publicly state in your response to comments today that you do not support the content or distribution of these cards. Should you not so state today your condemnation of these cards, I and many of us will have no other option but to assume you both support the distribution of these cards and the messages they contain. And that works, one or both of you are behind them. Such a conclusion would likely result in the loss of what remaining support for one or both of you have in this county. In addition, you both, I believe, have made reference to the negative impact that Commissioner Thomas has on staff. I assume you both think that we should take your word for their feelings in these matters. I, for one, do not. As the staff also works for the citizens of this county, a number of us would like to hear from a number of them in the next business meeting as to their opinions on the conditions that you, the Commissioners, have created for their work environments. I believe the staff that are willing to discuss their thoughts with us should be allowed to do so with no chance of repercussions that might adversely affect their standing or their jobs. I believe they should be allowed to answer questions from the citizens attending the meeting without interference. Some transparency within the Commissioner's office might prove beneficial for all of us. I look forward to your response to my comments. Thank you.
Additional citizen comment today? Any additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
My name is Doug Schull. I'm a retired airline pilot, and I've lived in Douglas County since 1982. I am highly concerned that our school system and Commissioners refuse to take the proper steps to adequately protect our children and our teachers and staff. Our elected Commissioners did not ask the public and did not adequately advertise for a public meeting on school safety. I reviewed the January 23 Commissioners' meeting where you asked for public opinion. There were only a handful of people at that meeting. You got zero response, and you then voted an untested and questionable technology in a two-to-three vote in favor of that technology that currently has five class action lawsuits against it for fraudulent representation of the technology, the technology's capabilities, and the manipulation of test data from three different parties. I posted on Nextdoor a couple weeks ago, on the topic of school safety, and it got, according to Nextdoor, 8,500 views in two days. The people of Douglas County are concerned. The students in Denver are concerned. They did a die-in protest at the State Capitol. They're concerned, and they're aware. We need to protect them. We need to give them confidence. In the last two weeks, we have had three independent TV stations around the U.S. that did their own study on the innovation that you want to put in STEM school. In all three, in all three cases, that system failed. Schools are removing this innovation. The innovation you want to put in STEM school does not detect most Ferris knives, does not detect non-Ferris knives, does not detect ghost guns, does not detect small guns. That begs the question, why won't you, the Douglas County Commissioners, do an RFP? That requires, you're spending a million dollars of taxpayers' money. You should, by state statute, do an RFP. Compare the system that you want to put in there with other systems. I have talked to the SRO at STEM School, and he said, after his independent testing, was not impressed with the system you want to put in STEM School. According to Kelly Rena, KSON/STEM, BOD President Chair, STEM, she and they were not involved in the vetting of this innovation. Please, don't listen to me. Do the proper thing. Do an RFP. Compare, runs a side-by-side comparison of other products that are available, that are better and cheaper. Ask the public for a robust discussion. Make our students 95% safe instead of 60%. Thank you.
Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me be here. I really appreciate the opportunity. I am...
And ma'am, if you want to just state your name and where you reside.
So my name is May Sands, and my address is 10009 Stratfield Lane, Highlands Ranch. So many of our neighbors are really, really concerned about getting defamatory flyers towards one of our Commissioners. We thought we were from the same party, and we work together. I just want to make sure that nothing else happened because it truly comes down to the only two left people that work for us. So we are very aware of many, many flyers that we've been receiving for weeks, and we just want that to stop. And we hope you are in support of the high conflict added to defame Ms. Thomas. So we want to see that you work together and stop that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comment? Troy, is there any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any Commissioner comments.
So I'd like to thank everybody who waited through the whole meeting to talk. We have never had, last month, last meeting was the first time that we made citizens wait till the end of the meeting to speak. And I wish we could have citizen comment at the beginning of the meeting, so thank you for waiting throughout this whole meeting to talk to us. You know, Doug, Doug Schull emailed the three Commissioners on February 4th after he learned about the contract we had issued for STEM. And he made a lot of good comments in there, some concerns that I already had. And if I had my druthers, this board would ask the high school that accepted the contract to stop the purchase and do a test so that we make sure that we are making our kids as safe as possible. So that's my response to you. And, you know, I wish that none of this had ever happened, that it had been like the first few years when I was a Commissioner, that the three of us worked together well. For two years, I have been removed from boards and commissions and defamed, and, you know, I just wonder if one of the boards I was removed from was so that a Commissioner could have influence on the election that's going to happen today on who takes over that board? Because I haven't seen any evidence of any wrongdoing on my behalf. So I appreciate the citizens that come here and talk about us getting along and working together. That's what I want, but it is very hard. I know that we are starting to have civility discussions, and not all three of us are joining those meetings. So I'm not sure how this is going to end, but I commit to you that I will continue to come to work and be professional and support what I think are the reasons that you all supported me, to keep government small and to make sure that the tax dollars that we spend are wisely spent and conservatively spent. So again, thank you for all of you being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Further Commissioner comments?
Well, thank you, Chair. Well, I'd like to end today with, I think, some good news. Next week, I spoke earlier about Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, our federally mandated municipal planning organization for transportation, as well as a couple other things here in the Denver area. Next, not tomorrow, but next Wednesday, following, the board will convene, and the board will be deciding on something that Art made a little bit of a comment on, and that's the fourth stage of the transportation improvement process that we've been in, really for the last year and a half. A couple years ago, we changed how the financing at Dr. Cog works to where we will allocate to projects that are of regional importance, but then we'll go ahead and allocate to projects of the subregional. And this is very important because it allows the five different counties to come together, not only county Commissioners that represent the county on the board, but also the municipalities that are on the Dr. Cog board, come together and decide not so much how, what the elected representatives from Boulder might think that we need in terms of transportation planning here in Douglas County, not so much what we in Douglas County might think that the people of Boulder need to be doing for their transportation planning. But it allows us to plan for our own allocation of federal funds that, by the way, you know, we're, it is April, and so we're all going to be paying federal taxes later, that's still our money. And the money that is used for transportation planning here in the Denver regional area, these are federal funds. These are funds that we have paid in and are coming back. And the good news is, is that next Wednesday, I believe we're going to be receiving in about $11 million over the next three years for transportation funding through our municipal, or, excuse me, our metro planning organization. And so that's about $11 million in federal funds that will be put to good use, I assure you, here in the county. I know Castle Rock has a large project that they'll be working on, but also even Lone Tree is going to have a project on that. And so, you know, this is a little, I know there's been some talk about the work that we do here at the county. This is obviously maybe just a small piece of that work. It's a big piece for guys like Art and I, but it's work that will be ongoing, and it's work that is being, that is productive, that is helping to make our county better. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Teal, thank you for that. I'll comment as well. I am incredibly pleased to focus on the good work of the people of Douglas County. Today, we talked about 911 emergency dispatchers, road widening project, also increasing wildfire support in our community, eliminating radium from a local community, adding additional water, and improving transportation on State Highway 83. I represent close to 400,000 people in this community, and through our Director of Communications, we can reach close to 200,000 in about 30 seconds. We do hear from the vast group of individuals very frequently. We are often cited as the most transparent government, not only in the area, but in the entire state. All of our meetings are recorded, transcribed. We've had 70 live town halls attended by thousands. So we do engage pretty significantly. That said, I do greatly appreciate the citizens that have come today. I just want to be clear, my focus will continue to be the good work of the people. I have never run a negative campaign. I don't support negativity. I have nothing to do with this, and I never will. That said, I think we've had a lot of good discussions about professionalism and civility. I'm going to continue to offer those up as opportunities for us to talk about governing with civility. What I do know is that this is a national conversation. 93% of those recently surveyed in a citizen survey stated that civility is a priority issue for them. And that's not just here, that's statewide, that's nationally, that's internationally. So when elected officials focus on governance and the good work of the people, I think that's when good things get accomplished. I think we've seen some upstream movement, some possibilities. I've said many times that I think if we can all commit to civility moving forward, there's no reason that we can't govern with continued excellence into the future. As of today's date, I am the only Commissioner that has signed the civility pledge. So my hope is that my colleagues will continue to attend those meetings and eventually sign that pledge to civility because I think that's a good first start towards what the vast majority of our citizens expect. So those will conclude my comments. With that, let me turn it over to our county manager, Doug DeBoard.
May I make a response, please?
Sure.
You know, I would just like to add that, you know, Commissioner Leyden, you always say you've never involved yourself in any negative campaigning, but the attacks on me started in April last year, right after the assembly, when I was running for sheriff. And so you were continually in the media saying that I was under investigation while I was running for sheriff. So while you don't think it was a negative attack, I think it was a negative attack, and I would just like to put that out there.
Well, Commissioner Thomas, since you raised that, you came in last at that assembly before there was any conversation from any of us, and the Republicans in this county reflected that vote on you that day. Obviously, there are a lot of issues that we've had with you, but I don't think looking into the past is helpful. And I'll just speak to you directly instead of the citizens that have come here and spent their time with us, that I think the most productive thing we can do is focus forward, not focus in the past.
And until we figure out what happened in the past, it's hard to go forward. So that's why I'm looking forward to us working with someone to figure out why I've been accused of all these investigations that I've been found innocent of.
Well, again, Commissioner Thomas, if the focus is to work together, I'm here and ready to do that. If your focus is to fight and continue fighting, you may be doing that by yourself. So with that, I'll turn it back to our county manager for his report.
Thanks.
No, you may not, ma'am. Citizen comment has ended for today. Our county manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just due to time, I was just going to call out a couple things, but just in the county manager report, I just encourage you to, on page four, there's an extraordinary report of one of our heart navigators and their efforts to clean up an encampment. Just to call your attention to that. Thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeBoard. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. You're all, of course, invited to attend, and that will be at 1:30 p.m. We will convene our land use and public hearing right at 3:00 p.m. Thank you very much.